Welcome to the City of Murfreesboro Historic Zoning Commission Regular Meeting, July 21, 2015. It appears that we have a quorum, and I call the meeting to order. First item of business is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting from June 16, 2015.
Move, we accept them.
I hear that we have a motion to accept. We need a second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries, the minutes are approved. And the next item is new business. The first item is 339 East Main Street, Bill Roland requesting to add a screen-in porch to the rear of the residence. Robert, would you have anything to say regarding that?
Sure. Chairman Backland, this property, it's at 339 East Main Street. The applicant is Bill Roland. Like you said, he's requesting to add a screen porch at the rear of his house. This, it's lot, excuse me, the property is located on the north side of East Main Street, two lots east of Junior's Food Land on East Main, and the property is commonly known as Wexford Condominiums. Mr. and Mrs. Roland reside at the property that's shown on the monitor. There's three other units to the rear of the property. He resides in the front, and he's wanting to add a screen-in porch to the rear of the property, right next to the west side of the property. They had to receive approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals since it's within 10 feet of the side lot line, and they received their approval at last month's BZA meeting. Included in your agenda package, if I can find my mouse here, go through some photographs of this. This elevation, this drawing shows the, a drawing of the porch. The top drawing, where here where the hand is, is the west side of the property. Now, you can see the brick wall with the porch. This other drawing here shows the entire porch attached to the rear of the house. This is a rear view of the property, of the screen-in porch and the house, from looking at the rear of the house. Again, this is another full layout of the existing house with the screen-in porch. Here we have the front of the property. The house, I think, was built, I think, in 1980, was it 89, 85? Okay. It is a non-contributing structure in the East Main Street Historic District on the National Register of Historic Places. So, that being said, we'll look at another angle. This is a picture taken from East Main Street of the property where my hand is, and where the hand is now. You can see the brick wall, and you'll see a portion of the screen-in porch is the reason why we brought it to the commission, so you'll be able to see a part, a portion of it from the street. This is a close-up picture of the area, of the brick wall and the house. You'll see a portion of the screen-in porch right in here.
Robert, excuse me, would you go back to the last one?
This one here?
That's the one I didn't understand where that's taken.
This is Gail Henry's old house?
It's in her driveway.
This is her driveway?
Oh, in her driveway.
Right.
Okay.
Right. And we're looking on to Roland's property with the brick wall. And you'll see this area, just a small portion of what will be seen from the street. This is the house adjacent to the west, which is Gail Henry's old house. And this is the house adjacent to the right along East Main Street. And I think that's all for the photographs. The applicants in the attendance, in the audience, are able to answer any questions you may have, and me as well, after, we won't have a public hearing, but just after, for discussion.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions of the applicant? Could the applicant step up to the podium, please, and say your name and address?
Bill Roland, 339 East Main.
Thanks. Yes.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify some things, I see on the cover sheet that, Robert, you prepared, or someone in the department prepared, says that the materials on the addition will be wood. However, the drawing says there'll be composite materials. What will it be made out of?
I cannot answer that question.
And then in addition, it says the roof will be asphalt, shingles on a flat, slightly sloped roof, but the drawing says it's EPDM, which is sheet rubber. Do you know that?
I think it'd be the sheet rubber.
I highly recommend the sheet rubber, because you would never get a warranty on that flat a roof, and it would be an absolute nightmare for you to maintain. What is the screen material, the insect screen material? Do you know? Is it vinyl, or is it aluminum, or copper, or something else?
We have not made that decision. I really can't address that either. I mean, it's, we want something that will be, obviously, keep the insects out, but also, my wife is concerned about the sun also, so I gotta do some research to see what is appropriate. I don't, I can't answer that.
I just would highly recommend you don't go with the vinyl, because it tears quite easily, and it just...
I don't, no, we won't do that.
Yeah. Also, if you could pull up the drawing, perhaps, there, the floor plan? You have a set of door, excuse me, a set of steps on one side of the screen porch, but not on the other side where the wall is. How are you getting out of that pair of doors?
Well, we won't, those doors, the structure continues through that, those set of doors there, to a five-foot...
Is it a raised deck?
The deck, yes.
Okay.
That's the word I was looking for.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what, where you're talking about, Jim.
Where Gail Henry's old wall and their common wall was, there's a screen wall there. And he's got a pair of, a set of steps on the left side, but not on the right side, so I was questioning if it was a parachute door, or a railing there in front of it. You open the doors for ventilation only, or if there was a deck. I assumed there was a deck there.
There is a deck, yes.
Okay.
It's five-foot in width.
Any other questions? Anyone? Concerns?
I would just add that, you know, it's, whether or not it's painted wood or composite, it's going to be painted correctly, the outside trim.
To match the existing wood or structure.
We've allowed composite material, like Hardy plank, in times past, and it comes pre-painted, and you just cut off and nail it up there as much as you want. I think going with that kind of approach is fine, because we've set the precedent before. The EPDM roof, I highly recommend, and that you get a very low slope to pitch the water to all three of the sides there, so where it's not ponding up there on the roof, that would be in your best interest. And then as far as the insect screening, I would highly recommend you go with the metal over the vinyl.
We will. Anything else? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this with Mr. Thompson's suggestions, of which Mr. Lewis will provide those in writing to Mr. Thompson.
We have a motion to approve, approve the project with the conditions that Mr. Thompson recommended, the rubber roof and the metal screening.
Second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next item on the agenda is the proposal for 346 East Main Street. David and Julie Becker requesting to remove the lattice, not original to the house, and replace the old screens on the lower back porch with gliding windows, with screens and fixed glass panels. Robert?
Yes, sir. This property is located on the southwest corner of East Main Street and Manny Avenue. The house was built around circa 1903 in the Queen Anne, in colonial revival style of architecture, with a wraparound porch, arched windows, hip roof, octagonal turret. It's a two-and-a-half-story house with a brick veneer, and it is a contributing structure in the East Main Street Historic District of the National Register of Historic Places. The applicants would like to remove the lattice located at the rear of the house, which faces east and south. The lattice is not original to the house, and they want to replace the old, they would replace the old screens on the lower back porch with a combination of Anderson gliding windows with screens and fixed glass panels. The windows are to be made of a material called Fibrex, which is a composite material made from reclaimed wood fiber and a polymer. The windows are a low E4 smart glass, and this will enable the applicants to convert their porch into a three-season porch and eliminate further rain and weather damage to the wooden floor, porch flooring, and the furnishings as well, as it'll increase the security to that portion of the house. I'd like to go through some photographs here. What we have on the screen here is a picture taken probably not too short after the house was built, and you can see that the back porch here, where my hand is rotating here, this is the area that we're talking about. It's quite open. The next page here is a current photo, taken when there was snow on the ground. So, this is a side, the next photograph is a side picture from Manny Avenue, and it shows the side, the east side, where the panels are, the wooden lattice. Here we have another picture that shows both sides of the south and the east side of the property, with the windows and the lattice, and this is where the work is going to be This is a close-up. Too close. But you can see the lattice work, and you can see where the, on the south side, and where the damage, where the weathering is affecting the railings and the wood. This is, this is the house adjacent to the south of the property, which is covered in trees almost. This is another shot of that house, which is adjacent to this house. And adjacent on East Main Street is this house right here. And also included in your agenda package is some pictures from Anderson that shows the type of windows that they're going to be using. And I think these will be used at the top, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
David can...
Centered and not opposite.
And these are the circle here where the windows, the gliding windows, I think that's what he's going to use also. Some door hardware, window hardware. The applicant is available to answer any questions, and I'll be able to add some also if needed.
Thank you. Robert, and any questions from members of the commission?
Dave, I was wondering, do you know when the lattice was put on?
No, I don't. But anyways, just to keep things in sync here, my name's David Becker, 346 East Main. And this is Doug Robertson, who is with Anderson Renewal. I don't know what, they were there when we moved in in 1998, have no idea. Robert, could you go back to the original picture of the house? And I'll give you a little background of why I wanted to do this. First of all, those three people you see on the porch, I'm sure that's not myself, because I am old, but I'm not quite that old. We're only, we're only dealing with the lower portion, and you can see, originally, it was made of screen. And what we want to do is, is to take that screen out and make it a three-season porch. And the reason we want to make it a three-season porch is that, first of all, security, if once you get in our back porch, there's four different doors that you can get into our house. And so this will provide additional security in that, in that realm. Also, originally, there was a wood floor, which became very deteriorated over time because of the weather coming in, especially from the south. And we put a new wood floor in about four years ago, and we're starting to see some wear on it already, so we're trying to protect that. And then the third thing, then, it would provide some additional heat or air conditioning loss by sealing that off with the gliders. So, Robert, if you go back to one of the ones that chose the lattice? The, of course, the lattice will come out, and the word, the picture that you're looking at from the south, that will be a triple glider there, and they will also, the upper smaller windows will also be gliders, and where there's gliders, there'll be screen from the outside. So what we're trying to do is get back to what it looked like originally. And so wherever there's gliders, there'll be screen on the outside, so when you're looking at it, you'll see the screen first. And the reason we want with the gliders is because, well, double hung wouldn't look good to begin with, and anything that crank that would crank that onto the back staircase so that wouldn't work. And so that's pretty much what we're doing. We've got samples of the Fibrex that I'll bring up to you, and also samples of the screen, and what screen are we going with here?
This one here.
One on the right.
David, one thing I didn't catch when you were talking about the new windows, the gliders, did you say you're going to replace the windows on the top level as well? No?
No, we're not.
Okay.
We got approval to do those right after, when we first remodeled the house, but I will tell you that, that they are starting to leak, after 17 years, starting to leak some of the gas, and it's getting a little cloudy. So when we replace those windows, we'll replace them with gliders and not the, that have the grids in it, we won't have any grips in it. So we'll then actually match the first floor.
Okay.
Are you going to be removing, it looks like there's a railing with, along the bottom level. Are you taking that railing out?
No. What you see as far as framing is, and the vertical and horizontal grids will remain the same. And I'd never heard of Fibrex before, and I thought it was quite interesting, and I will tell you that, that on the glider windows, Anderson doesn't offer wood, pure wood, and neither does Pella. So I was quite interested in this Fibrex, and first I'd heard about it, but it is 60% of wood and 40% polymer. And so besides having wood in it, it's going to last a lot longer.
Go ahead.
And it'll be the white on the outside, white on the inside, just as at this point.
Based on the sample that was submitted to us, David, it appears that it's, it is a vinyl coated wood extrusion? Is it vinyl on the outside? What is it?
Well, it depends on the color. It's, it is called cap stock. It's applied wood, and it's extruded, and depending on the color, the chemical make of the surface. It doesn't allow mildew growth like vinyl. It is not vinyl, but it's a polymer. I don't know, I'm not a chemist, to try that.
Yeah. It pains me to have this discussion. It just appears that it is a, it's like a metal clad or a vinyl clad window, and historically we've not allowed vinyl clad windows in the district.
So Anderson makes vinyl clad windows. That's not what this is, because a vinyl clad window would be a wood window with...
I'm sorry, am I doing good? With a, with a outside adhered sheeting on the outside would be clad. In this case, this is, this is a, we're taking wood fiber and encapsulating every fiber with the polymer. So, and I have samples of vinyl, everybody knows what vinyl looks like, but it, it's not shiny like vinyl, it doesn't appear like vinyl, it doesn't behave like vinyl, and it behaves like the wood in all its positive features, but it's maintenance-free.
I did everything possible in high school to stay away from chemistry. My dad had a PhD in organic chemistry, and I knew I would never be that smart. But polymer sounds man-made and not real wood, and we've been harping on to everybody else, you know, no clad windows, and they would be painted wood windows. Is there not a Anderson wood window that could be used? Like a casement window that's similar, that wouldn't slide, but it would...
Due to the nature of current wood, Anderson has abandoned all wood windows, because there isn't enough stuff that's going to last.
There's not enough old growth wood left to use.
Exactly, that's the problem. And if it would be helpful, I have a sample of vinyl. When you hold the two next to each other, it looks nothing alike. It's hard when you're looking at one thing under the sliding.
You know, we all know at some point in our careers on this board is that new products are going to come up, and we're going to be forced to evaluate them as comparable items, but right now, we're, we've been staying true to the no clad windows, period. And so, yes, if you have a sample, I'd be interested to see it.
It's a vinyl sample.
Yeah.
And I noticed in the specs, Jim, that the Fibrex is 70% reclaimed wood fiber. Now, I don't know how you feel about that, but that made a lot of sense.
Well, but is the 70% the hollow interior brown material, or is it the light material?
Actually, it's 60/40, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry, 60/40.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, I don't know if I'm allowed to talk here. This is a vinyl window, and this is a clad window. And that's not vinyl, that's aluminum clad.
Where's the other sample? Of the sample you're holding your hand now, the brown inner core, is that wood?
It is 60% wood.
What is the white outer core, the polymer?
It's polymer.
And polymer is plastic.
It's a petroleum product.
Look at the appearance.
Oh, I know, I know. And David, you've looked at other windows, or wood, painted wood? I know you have mostly brick house, but you have a lot of painted wood as well.
Well, we also had Pella come out, and they don't even offer anything like this. It's all either vinyl or aluminum clad. And Doug, you want to tell them the story about why these two big firms are getting away from pure wood?
Yeah, I mean, we're, I go into old homes all the time, historic homes, and we replace them. And when they replace them with new wood, we're replacing them again really quickly because of the old growth, which you mentioned. Super quick story, replaced an 80-year-old farmhouse just a few weeks ago, and it had been abandoned for 20 years, and there was no paint on the windows, and there was no rot. None. Now we're in very expensive custom homes with very expensive wood windows that are 10, 15 years old, and there's holes rotted all the way through them. And the difference is, is all the wood we have now is wood that's eight-to-12-year-old farm-raised trees, and so they're so susceptible to moisture. So wood has just become not an option for anybody that doesn't want to replace their windows every few years. Anderson's history is wood. We love wood. You know, and so, kind of the evolution of the window, but Anderson has gone from wood windows to clad windows to now to Fibrex. So, you know, clad windows have their issues, and I don't want to go too deep there unless you want me to.
Again, I passed on chemistry.
Yeah. Yeah, but unlike vinyl, so vinyl is a petroleum product. Vinyl, everybody knows you've got to pressure wash your vinyl siding all the time. That's because mildew loves it, because it feeds it. That's not the case with this product. It is paintable. Vinyl, you don't want to paint. You can paint this. I don't like people painting it, because then if you paint it, the paint will fail, my window won't fail, but you'll have to repaint it again. And so, you know, of the industry options, you've got wood. You can do wood. It's just going to have the problems we've stated. You can do vinyl, and it's plastic, you know, it's going to look very plasticky, it's going to mildew. You can do a clad window, and that's, or fiberglass, which looks like plastic.
What is the wood you use on your new windows?
These?
Any brand-new window, what, is it pine?
Yes, it is.
White pine?
Yep.
So you don't use like a cedar, or a cypress, or a redwood, or anything else that has natural decay-resistant properties in it?
No. Anderson Windows, and that's not Renewal, basically sells engineered wood, or taking the pine and taking all the imperfections we can out of it, and then cladding it with vinyl, called PermaShield, or this. That's what Anderson does.
I mean, David, if your house were all the wood windows, I would say just salvage your wood windows, repaint them, and put a storm sash on them or something like that. This is a different situation where there never were windows, so it's, it's a new area for us to be reviewing.
Right. And, and that's why I brought these folks with me, because I knew there was going to be a lot of discussion on it. You know, unfortunately, there's not an option for pure wood on the gliders, so we can't get it. And, and in order to do that right, so where, when you're looking from the outside and you're seeing the screen and the window behind it, to get into anything close to looking like it did in 1900, you're going to have to go with the gliders. You can't go with double hung, you can't go with wind out. And so in order to make it a three-season porch, we have to be able to open the windows at times. It would be silly to just have glass there with wood frames.
And now we've, we've allowed vinyl lattice to go up in certain situations and stuff like that in the district. We just approved a cement fiberboard trim on the, just the last project we evaluated. And so this is just different, and I knew at some point we would come to a point where we're going to be asked to go to a man-made cupboard or whatever material, and this is a different kind of application.
What excited me about it is, is I sort of aligned it to a Hardy plank-type material, okay, which we've approved for quite a while in the district now. Yes, it's not real wood, but it, it looks like wood, and it's better than wood, and so we've approved it. And so when you look at the, this Fibrex, it's going to look like wood. It's not going to look like anything else. It's not going to look like vinyl, it's not going to look like aluminum. And being that it is 60% wood with a polymer, 40% polymer, I was pretty excited about it as being an option in historic zones. Now, I can tell you that a gentleman that we first talked to at Anderson has taken a transfer out west, but he had worked with the Nashville Historic Zone and said that, you know, they use it there, but we have not been able to document that, so I didn't even want to get it into the packet.
You said Nashville?
Nashville. But...
Which also prohibits the use of vinyl clad?
Now, we have, we have approved in the district some aluminum clad windows at some point, haven't we, Robert?
I think it was like on new detached... I think it was like on new detached, like a garage. I think it was like the Ward garage.
Something detached from the main structure.
I think it was not the original building.
Looking at the guidelines, and I don't know if I have the most up-to-date version, but the guidelines for alterations, additions, demolitions on windows, it says the original type, size, shape of windows should be maintained. Original number and arrangement of panes should be maintained. Size and width of muntens should be maintained. Painted aluminum storm windows and screens are more appropriate than shiny raw mill finish storm windows and screens. And it doesn't really go into the material. But then, if you look at the material for siding, or original building materials, wood siding should be retained. Original siding should not be covered or replaced with the material or texture not original to the building. Cement fiberboard siding, similar in texture, size, and weather to the original material, may be approved. Synthetic covering materials in general, the use of synthetic materials is discouraged due to the damaging effects. That's, we're talking siding now, not windows. So, that, it does not specifically address the material on windows, although for other materials, generally, we would want to have the original type of material if that were available. And this is obviously synthetic. It's a polymer. So, but if it's not possible to obtain that sort of thing, you know?
Well, and the other thing is, we're not, they're not replacing windows.
Yes.
You know, that's the other big difference.
It's a different application. That's the milestone I want us all to understand because I see this as a potential, someone's going to come running in here and say we're going to all do this kind of material, which I know these guys would love to sell more windows like that. But yet, I think it's such a different application that I don't see it, I don't see the precedent that allows the floodgate to open personally.
I don't either. And the thing is, I'm really interested in that we've been exposed to this today, this Fibrex, because it certainly seems to me like it's a much better option than vinyl clad wood or aluminum.
I would definitely agree that the wood they put in windows today, pine, new growth pine is, you might as well keep your checkbook open because you're going to be replacing them shortly. And that's why I always try to, on my historic projects, is to reuse the old windows and rebuild them. And the wood is so much better. But old growth...
You haven't been...
I've not used that.
You haven't dealt with that.
Yeah.
Just thinking out loud, are we okay with the design concept for this? I mean, we're going to make an alteration in it, but we're altering something that's been previously altered. The screen, as I understand it, the screen's going to cover the gliders, is you know, there's going to be a historically correct buffer between the gliders and the outside, the view, which is, I guess, the first thing that we're looking at. Are we good, are we good with that? What is your feeling? Well, you know, you said it well when you said you knew the day was coming, when we would have to look at this. And it's not because it's, in this case, it's not because it's the cheaper option. It's because the option that we prefer is, in this particular case, not a good one. And I've been on that porch, and I've been there, and it's, the security issue is a legitimate issue. So, I'm...
Could we go back to the picture that's this one, so we can look at it a little more detail? For instance, when I look at that, I'm not on my elevation, south, the right side there, there's three panels within the column structure. And so, you're taking out the lattice, I get that. You're going to leave the wall panel from the top of the handrail down, I'm guessing, in place. And you'll set these new gliders on top, up to the horizontal member where the top of the lattice stops. Is that the case?
Yes.
And then, the three panes above that, which appear to be fixed, will those be gliders as well?
Yes.
So, you're taking out, you're keeping the horizontal where the top of the lattice is, but you're taking all the verticals out. Is that correct? How can you slide within the three panes?
Where there's vertical on the bottom will still remain vertical on the top, just like it is today.
So, if you were to take out the lattice, that is the way the gliders will look?
Yes.
So, but, so you've got three cells of lattice within that right grouping there?
Yes.
So, each of the lattice panels will have two panes of glass, one slides? Well, then they're not gliding.
Well, the triple there, where you're, right where the cursor is, that'll be stationary, and the two sides will glide. Where you see, right beside it to the left, where you see just two, that will be a double glider. Both sides will glide. But all five will have screens on it.
Let's try this again. So, the right side has three panes, and you're going to make, and so, it's going to have two stationary and one glider?
One stationary, right where the cursor is, and then two, the two on the outside of it will be gliders. It can glide into the center.
But where the hand is, I wish I could grab the hand. The vertical member between the columns are going to stay put?
That's correct.
I don't get how it works.
Where the lattice is and where the screen is, it will stay the same.
And so, it glides behind the vertical post. I don't get how the planes work.
How many tracks will there be to slide?
There's just two tracks, okay? So, we'll simply, I'm sorry.
I think we probably all grew up in the 70s at least, where there was sliding patio door glass or solid panes. So, are you going to put like a pair of those in each of those three compartments?
I don't know how to answer. Okay, so you've got five panels you're looking at there, right?
Let's just focus on the three on the right.
Okay, the three on the right. So, there, you'll still have, you'll have three panes of glass that'll be replacing the three section of lattice. The one on the right will slide, the one on the far left will slide, the one in the middle will be stationary.
So, the depth of the vertical intermediate members will not be full depth. They'll be partial so that you can glide behind it?
That's right. The center pane will be slightly further into the room compared to the two outer ones. They'll be on the same track. So, they would literally come and touch each other in the middle if you were opening them, both.
So, is there any modification to those intermediate members to make this work? It's the depth of the intermediate members. They're not really changing, or they are? Are they? I don't get how you slide them if you've got framing there that's full depth.
I'm not sure I understand the question. It's going to have a full window frame with two rails. And so, the two ones, the two outer ones will slide on the outer rail. Well, it's really not, I'm sorry. And then, the interior one's fixed. Does that answer your question?
No, but...
Sorry.
It's okay. It's okay. I'm just not understanding the depth of how the tracks work with the intermediate frame still left in place. But the effect will be the same, I guess is all that matters. And the same thing will happen in the three, what appears to be black squares now above that lattice, will be the same thing?
Right. So, you'll have a triple glider on top of a triple glider. So, they'll all line up.
Yeah, that is just screen, solely only screen now. And there will be screen on outside, outside the gliders. So, you're going to see screen on the top, three small ones. And then, when you come down to where the lattice is, you'll see screen.
How high up is that triple, is that triple glider going to be? Can you reach it and actually move it? Wouldn't it be cheaper to make it fixed?
Well, we were going to go fixed, and it's a tad more. But to get it to look the same, the triple was two inches too long to go without any support. So, to make it the bottom and the top match, we went with the gliders, even though we probably won't use them.
Yeah.
And it is...
You'll probably never get up there.
Yeah. I'm tall, but...
I don't think you'll ever get up there. But I get where you're going. You want it to match. That, I highly compliment that. That's great. I'm just trying to understand it better to make sure we know what we're approving.
If we were to move fixed windows together, the borders would be much bigger than below.
David, I see in the upper windows, there's some kind of a mutton on part of the windows, but not all of them. And you're going to have...
Well, that's because they're open.
It's because they're open. You will not have any muntens on these lower windows that you're putting in?
No. And like I said earlier, once we replace the ones on the top, we're going to make them match the bottom.
Okay.
And they're starting to sow some fog, so some of that gas, whatever it was 17 years ago, was inside the panes, is starting to give way. So, it won't be too long, and the boss will be telling me to change those.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from anyone? Comments? Do we have a motion?
A move that we accept as suggested in the packet.
We have a motion. Second?
I second that.
And a second. Any further discussion?
Can we call on the property owner to keep us advised of how well this material does or does not work?
Unless you boot me off the board, I'll see you monthly.
No chance of that.
I do think it's, I think this is something we all need to be aware of and maybe have some information about. Because it, just in looking at it, it certainly looks like a good option, and it's something we're going to have to deal with down the road. And it just looks like something we could recommend, maybe.
And I would agree. I think it would be a case-by-case basis, though, just to be sure everybody's aware of that. It just won't be freely given because I think the application and how it's used will be important.
Yes.
Well, you know, if I had an option for pure wood, even though all the accolades go to this, I would have went to pure wood just because I know how we feel about it. But to get the gliders, I couldn't get it. And this really got me excited, this Fibrex.
Well, I don't think we should be in the business of promoting things that we use just because it's the most economically efficient thing, especially when the look potentially disturbs the integrity of the house. This is a situation where this is not the cheapest way it could be done. And it is, I think it probably is a good solution. And I know, like Jim, I've spent most of my life trying to make new materials work in old houses. So, this looks like something that might work, but we'll, I mean, I think, I think it's, there's a lot of good logic behind it.
And I would say you spent a lot of time and money restoring this house. It looks fantastic. It's just for us, it's a new material. And I know that you wouldn't do anything that you didn't think was absolutely the right thing to do. So, I applaud you in that. It's just, it's just that it's a new material. And my concern has always been, anytime we introduce that, if we're not careful how we introduce it and approve it, it allows the floodgates to open for other poorly used applications. And that concerns me. But I know you would never do anything on this house that wasn't appropriate. So, I applaud you for that.
Thank you.
What I can do is look into the material. I'll contact the Nashville Historic Commission and see if they have any information to offer. And I can get on the internet and see if other historic districts, how they feel about it, if I can find anything on that. And I can report back to you on that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And could you also check with Tennessee Historical Commission, the fellow that came and spoke with us a year ago or so?
Dan Brown?
Louis Jackson.
Louis Jackson.
Well, I was thinking of Dan Brown, but Louis Jackson maybe as well. Just, you know, this is, this application, of course, is a porch. But if we're seeing it on a porch, we're going to see it on windows. And polymer is plastic. I mean, it's simple enough. To call it something else is, you know, just...
Wordsmithing.
Yeah. Vinyl's plastic, or it's a chemical material, and so is Fibrex. So, I think that we have to pay attention to that in future applications. And a porch, side porch, back porch is a little different. But when it comes to the front windows, I think it's, I think we have to take a much harder look at it. So, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we not have a lecture of officers? Do we have a lecture of officers?
Next item on the agenda, staff reports and other business. Did we, we voted in officers last meeting, right?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Any other reports?
Well, I have another, under old business, other business. I've been talking to Pam Hale, who's a resident of East Main Street. And we considered an application for her last month for her front door and some shutters. She's having problems with the French doors. They're going to have to do major reconstruction of the inside in order for that to work. So, she's changed her mind, and they decided to go with just replacing the door itself.
So, it wouldn't change appearance at all?
It wouldn't. Well, it would change appearance a little bit. And we don't have her on the regular agenda, but since we have considered her last month's meeting, and she couldn't be here today, I told her that I would bring it up just to let you all look at it and see what you think. And if you wanted to take one of these and pass it around. I have two photographs. One is what they're proposing, and the second page is what's existing. Their proposed door, it's, it has a lot of glass in it. It's got a couple panels on the bottom. It's a fiberglass door. And it will...
Is that metal in the window?
In the window.
Metal, filigree?
Oh, no. This, well, the door, she's just talked, this is a proposed door. The existing door is on the second page. And all they're going to replace is the door itself. The glass across the top is going to stay, and they're just going to put the door in. Are you talking about the inlay and the glass?
Yes.
You know, I don't know what that is.
It adds another whole look to it.
Yeah. And I told her I would bring it up, get your comments, and see what you think about it. If we want to talk about it at the next meeting, we can talk about it today. She couldn't be here this afternoon, so I just wanted to bring it up to let you think about it.
Well, one thing that strikes me right away, Robert, is this, is this kind of Spanish look that I'm, feel that I'm seeing in this filigree work on the glass on this door. And that certainly is not the style of the house that she's putting it in. That's the first thing. And I don't know. I have to be educated about fiberglass.
I wouldn't, I mean, personally, fiberglass on a door, I think, is a mistake. It gets brittle with age, and it tends to crack. And it could be, with a door, you're going to kick it from time to time, just going through it. It just happens unless you put a kick plate on it. And Robert had come to me earlier about this. And if you look, it's a six-panel door, the old door, metal door. It is metal. And I wasn't sure if they were offering to take the upper four panels and put glass where there were the panels, or one solid sheet, which is sort of what the front looks like, the first page. It's, you take, you leave the bottom two panels, and you make the rest of it glass. To me, if you have it all glass, and you don't put that filigree panel on there, security, you've got a big piece of glass on the front that you could just bash in and get into your house. So, security is a concern there. I had suggested, too, that possibly they could take the same six-panel doors and get a six-panel door with glass at each of the six panels, potentially. And that would allow, I think she's going for, she said she wants a lot of light. And I think that what they're proposing doesn't work with that house. I don't think as far as appropriate, is it appropriate to it? Now, the metal door's probably a replacement that's there now. But this is yet another one.
I'm sorry, Jim. What did you say about the metal door?
The metal door is probably a replacement itself anyway, because the house has been like, I don't know. What is the age of the house? been like the, I don't know, what is the age of the house, do you remember?
Ah, I wanna say seventy, I think it's seventy. I don't know if they had metal, they may have had metal back then.
They may have had metal in the seventies, but if you'll notice, the one on the front has also a round head on it instead of a square head. The surround of the door frame that's there now is sort of colonial revival, whereas that round-headed door is sort of French, sort of Spanish, sort of something. I get that she wants more light, but I don't think this accomplishes, accomplishes it in a way that's appropriate.
Okay, well, I can, I can pass that.
That's my fault, I'm just, I'm just one member here.
And I think there have to be some other options. I, I certainly couldn't approve this door that she's shown us. I think that's really, doesn't go with her house at all.
The, the metal work in the glass, if that were more vertical and horizontal, or like you were saying, Jim, just replacing the panels with glass?
Well, I think we've got the whole issue of a fiberglass door as well.
Yeah.
I mean, and there's a storm door on the existing door, this doesn't appear to have a storm door, and I'm just wondering how they're, what their plans are to deal with that. Fiberglass, I don't know what, what's that, is it facing north?
South.
Be facing south, so you'll get a lot of sun.
It's good.
A heat sink in there between the storm door and that.
Yeah.
She's not, she's not sure if she's gonna keep the storm door or not. She may keep the storm door, and then again, if, if, if the fiberglass door works good enough without the storm door, she may remove the, the storm glass door.
I think we're, we're dealing with a lot of she may, she might, she will, she, you know, we don't know what she's gonna do, so I think she needs to come in here with examples of the door she wants, and, and show some other choices. I think what we're hearing from the board, I'm, just from a few of us, that this, we don't care for this one, and consider, we don't consider this appropriate to the house.
So, this was not something that required, I mean, it's just sort of an informal conversation that you had with her, and that maybe it would be better if we had a more formal discussion with her present.
The one thing I could add to this is just simply the fact that you can replace a door quite easily, this is not like you're putting in a bay window like at one point they considered, and you can't reverse that, you can reverse a door change. So, there might be a way in which we can look at that, that this is easy to replace again in the future and get it more appropriate, but I'd say from a pure design point, this is not appropriate.
And I also think we've agreed that fiberglass is not appropriate.
It's, it's another one of those things that, I think, if you've not, if you've not ever had that material, you have no idea what you're gonna be dealing with. I mean, it's, it's, I'm personally, and I suspect Jim shares my thoughts, is, I, I wouldn't recommend it to anybody for, for doors or, or window material even more.
Really saving her some money.
I think so. I'll, I'll pass that along to her, and hopefully she'll have something to present at the next meeting, because we need to take a look at something that will work.
Thank you, Robert. Are there any other business, other reports?
I don't have any.
Mr. Chairman, I have one thing I want to bring to the board and to Robert. Robert, the church on East Main Street, the steeple is really looking bad. It's the one little church that's on the...
Gale Lane?
Yes.
Outside of the street.
Yes, and my, my concern is, is that if they don't start to, to scrape and repaint, that they're gonna come in with some other issues that they're not gonna be able to repair. And I believe the current folks that are in that church are not the owners of it, but I, do you know for sure, Mary or May, one way or the other?
No, I, I do know that they've been, in the past, in recent, recently, they've had different people go up to look at that, so...
Okay.
I guess they are at least, you know, aware of it, but whether they've taken any action.
I talked to them a couple weeks ago, they're doing some work on the inside, I can contact them and, and let them know about what the outside is, is looking like.
It's really starting to, it's getting down to the pure wood, and I'm not sure what the steeple's made out of, but it's, it needs some attention big time.
I would hate to see demolition by neglect.
Yeah, exactly.
What about the house on the west side of Central Middle School there that's being heavily cleaned up? The ivy's coming off, it seemed to have no one in there for a long time, it's, it's...
No, it does.
It's, it's being cleaned, it's being cleaned up now, are they gonna be coming before us, do you know?
Ah, what corner?
It's behind the apartment building facing East Main and next to Junior, Billy Ledbetter.
Corner, University and, and Main, I haven't even, they...
Right next to the Ledbetters.
Yeah.
They're just painting, they're, they're, they've taken the ivy down, I talked to the contractors today, and they're gonna paint it, she told, the contractor, one of the contractors told me that it's gonna be painted the same color it was.
This is a germ style architecture, is that what I'm, is that the one that's?
No, this is sort of...
Between the Tudor and the Ledbetters.
I'm happy to see them working on it.
Yeah.
And of course, we don't regulate paint colors, so that's not...
They're just cleaning it up and sanding it down. They said that the ivy had grown into a lot of the mortar, and they were just really having to take, you know, those steps, especially on the front of it.
Yeah, it's a, it's a beautiful house, it just, it needs some love and care on it, and it's looking a whole lot better now, the ivy's even off.
Exactly.
It looks amazing.
Robert, I wonder if at some time in the next several months, that, a little more continuing education for us from the Historical Commission, or in the way of courses that might be available for us on historic districts, you know, we're certified local government, and I think we're supposed to receive some kind of periodic training.
Training, yeah, some kind of... I think the CLG provides for one member to go to the, the state annual program, I can see when that's gonna be.
Yeah, might be useful for some of us to attend that sort of thing, I think.
Or even, even having...
Have someone come here.
Around that.
Right.
Talk to us.
Right. The, the requirements in the CLG program may be more stringent than that even, so...
Okay, I'll look into it and get back to you when I find something out.
Great. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Some of it.
Motion to adjourn and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And the motion carries, meeting is adjourned.